Would you call it all, please? All right, I have proof of post and will you join me for the flight from allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? All right, anything need changing? All those in favor, aye, or opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the 26th? Thank you. Do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you. Any corrections? Period on James and Sandy.
Yes.
Cindy, Kim, Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll and disbursements? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. All right, James and Sandy.
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Board President, I'll keep it short. Football season ended with the eight man game. I credit the kids. They battled hard through a very strenuous year. I would like to congratulate the soccer and volleyball and our cross-country member on reaching the status that they did this year. It was outstanding years for fall sports. That's all I got. Mark?
I'm good for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for the...
Policy.
All right, lots going on the policy. We were looking over some of the employee manual updates. We'll be bringing some probably not next meeting, maybe.
The 30th.
The 30th, I think. All right, and then we're going to be looking at some of the other ones. Wasby. Civics test requirements. We finalized it with some edits about the test itself requirements.
And since Ann is part, does some of the US history, so the requirement is that we have to have any policy, so we're just saying that the civics assessment will be a requirement of students graduating 2017. Nothing. Then all the work is the principal, everything after. And Vivian wants to be included also since there are some IEP caveats too for students taking the test. I'm not going to pass it.
And I'm discussing, just a little. We moved on interviews and hiring process, our procedures. Coming to the board will be a provision allowing board members to be a part of high-profile hirings or high-profile interview committees if things so choose. Mileage reimbursement, we touched on that. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. No changes. We're flying out the way it is. Procedural for field trips, rule 352. We talked about the number of chaperones and the notice, months of notice for long field trips. That will be coming to the board next time possibly. I don't know, two times.
Correct. Yeah, we're working on that. Also working on having as a part of a rule or exhibit the chaperone responsibilities as well as the student responsibilities for being on the trip. As well as compensation, you know, who's going more, who's the school representatives. We oftentimes have parents that are very happy to travel. We appreciate that. But also just being clear with the designations.
Administration will be coming back with the recommendation on enrollment caps?
Yes, so, well, no, not a problem.
We're bouncing it back and forth because it's a, yeah, I'll let Mark explain this one.
So there's, it's now required by law to identify caps for regular education and special education. So, you know, as a district, we're currently a three-section district. I'll call, and these are round numbers, but if 22, 4K through 5 is okay, I'm not saying that we like 18 to 20 better, but 22 is kind of starting to hit the ceiling. If that's 88, you could get 66 per classroom for a three, per grade level for a, you know, 4K through 5. Students at the middle school, high school, but our class size is a little bit larger, but balancing that, what is a three district, what's our capacity for a three-section middle school, high school? Then the flip of that is, what we consider in space capacity, we can do four sections per grade. But we set it at, you know, conceptually, early four, four sections of 22, which would be 88. But then we also have to consider, and Vivian helped me out, what's changed is, in the special ed world, used to say, "Sorry, student can't come here, we can't afford it." So now what they're asking us to do is to identify caps and programs. And this is a yearly concept, but it's just working to understand. You know, our largest class is the ninth grade class, but the Dale kindergarten is 63?
66.
66. So, you know, the six, the kindergarten is, you know, in terms of, would we accept students, not accept students? You know, the other balance of, is there a time where we, you know, would accept additional costs, hire another person for future growth? Or would we say at a certain point in time, hey, you know, we, we just, that's not where we're at this year? We can review it on an annual basis, but that is something we need to get in place prior to getting more.
Transgender students, there's currently bill running on the assembly and.
There's also circuit court decisions, so we're just waiting for some guidance there. But just wanted to educate people, put it on the radar and understand. They have a couple sample policies, one from the Holland Grove, another one, which is all students and that fair move from a co-curricular activities perspective.
And then food service payments currently, they've got a change this year without letting us know that they're not getting change back. They're just applying the extra to the accounts. We would like to have them get change back if asked forward just because it's, you know, they have given us if a kid brings 20 bucks in and has 10 bucks for the lunch, 10 bucks for a shirt, they wouldn't get the 10 bucks for the shirt, so it's straightforward. And we're still talking about payment of records requests. We're still kicking that around timestamp versus actual payment hours. We're still discussing it, still a topic to discuss.
I provided the committee with the Department of Justice language, how they treat, treat it. And I think it's pretty good reference, but as Isaiah said, you know, the balancing act of how much or when does it trigger? So.
And we're going to have a policy meeting on December 14th at 5:00.
Curriculum.
We have met a couple of times here. You'll see there are new courses coming up that we will be voting on for recommendations from the curriculum committee. Amy did a lot of updating on lots of different things. Go ahead, Amy, you can. Yeah.
So update on everything?
We can do.
Do you want to share anything?
Just on the, she's got a curriculum adoption update on D, so anything regarding the, the.
The new classes.
The new classes, yep.
So, the new classes now or later?
Just any updates from the last meeting, and we can do the new classes later.
For Build Your Own Curriculum, we purchased that program to store all of the district's curriculum in, and we train people until they're 12. And we've been having professional development days after school. We've trained a group trainer that help with the rest of the district, or training throughout the district, so it's not this one area. Anne and I went to something last Wednesday, it was a one-year event, or once a year event for BYOC, and learned a lot more that goes along with the program and everything. So we're able to do more professional development after school. We've settled timeline for getting courses done with our goal being a year and a half, no more than two years to get it all done and going and approved and so forth, so we can get it on the website and to the public. With Educator Effectiveness, we have been trying to get updates from the state on that as well and have certain things in place for evaluating our teachers. With what we can do right now, still using the Danielson model. Basically, we're doing all the work, we just, the place where we store all that is not working very well for the API, so we've come up with some alternatives for that, and that seems to be going well for staff. Testing wise, there's now a lot of testing going on right now because W K C E is no longer. So the new state test is called the Forward Exam, and maybe some changes since last time I talked was that they'll only be doing Science 4A, not 4A in time because the ACT aspirant covers science for the 10th grade, so they did double doses, which was nice. So in the spring, there's a lot of, all the testing is coming out. ACT is also online now. The access test for ELL students is also online. So everything is changing from paper to online, which, you know, is a whole other system. It'll be nicer in the long run, but it's learning all those systems and doing accommodations and like this since with that right now. At De Kleiner, we, at De Kleiner, we've had some after-school things. That's our data system for the district. And so we can put in all our math scores and all the scores are automatically uploaded into that as we give them in and so forth. So most of the teachers should have their SLOs and PPGs done and we're internally evaluating teachers with any observations and some formals already, so remember this year and there you go.
All right. I'm assuming nobody signed up to talk? Personnel, discuss possible action to hire a three-hour cook at the middle high school with a starting hourly rate of 1374.
I could, I could ask, I'm sorry, I walked in late. I just would ask that delay any action at this point in time as something has occurred in the last couple days? And so we're not bringing that individual forward.
Okay, well, then we won't take the motion. Mark second.
Thank you.
Discuss possible action to hire Michelle Leverance as a 1.0 FTE educational assistant at Black Earth Elementary with a starting hourly rate of 1374.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. Hearing done. James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Students, discuss possible action to approve open enrollment alternative request. Do I have a second?
Second.
The numbers.
Any discussion?
One.
Hearing done. James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve district administrator to negotiate a mental health partnership with Middleton Cross Plains School District to fund mental health crisis team. Do you want to?
Yeah, that's something new.
Yeah, I can explain. I think about two months ago, we, there's the announcement by Joe Parisi that we, there would be a potential for four additional mental health crisis teams. Two years ago, they started in Dane County, two in Madison School District, one in Sun Prairie, one in Verona, based on calls. And so what I'm asking the board to do today is allow me to negotiate. Middleton, Cross Plains, and Wisconsin Heights has had some conversations at that announcement that we, and we've also approached Joe Parisi to have a partnership. They have eight schools, we have nine, so they, we believe that if we demonstrate a partnership, we'd be more than likely, or more likely to get a team of mental health crisis people. What this would be is it's a 90-day program for the student, so basically it's a matter of getting the students connected. This, if it goes forward and the Dane County Board funds this, it's a private-public partnership, which is also, I think, has created some strength, but also filling some gaps. But it's, again, what happens is a crisis team comes in, students are identified based on needs, they have all that criteria, and then for 90 days, there's intensive support. And by the end of the 90 days, that student is set up, you know, people have seen a lot of success in those three districts. The cost for us probably could be as much as 15,000, probably a little bit less. Coming to you to negotiate it, one of the, the other part is this could start as soon as January 1st, if funded by the Dane County, funded by Dane County. It's a 50-50 match, and so what we did is one-ninth of the cost, it's probably more like 7,000 to 10,000. So by this, you know, again, this is negotiating a partnership. I also want people to be clear that you're supporting it. I would come back with a final dollar about once that is ready to go. So what we would do for next year, since it's halfway through the year, the cost would be, you know, 6,000 to 8,000, be, you know, twice as much next year. But hopefully that will be funded on an annual basis and provide support for our students.
Okay, any questions for Mark? Right, do I have a motion to approve district administrator to negotiate? Thank you. Discussion. Hearing done. James? Sandy? Cindy? Kim? Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well.
If I can do a footnote, we do have, we're hosting our mental health committee meeting, 6 to 8, this Thursday in the step room. Also, I want to announce that our support staff on January 22nd is getting the same training that the administrators got last August. McFarland School District has been trained, they have trainers trained, so they'll be coming to work with the support staff, with the goal of then training our certified staff in August next year.
Are we going to show up for that, right?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so you're not worried about number?
We've got a backup plan, but ideally what we're going to, we're going to take out all the tables or take down significant, so we'll have more room. If we have to, we'll have it set up to go to, ideally our presenter wants to be in here, so we're trying to make that happen.
I'm coming.
Yeah, we've got about 20 of our staff have said they're coming. If everybody said they were coming, then we would have just gone right to the gym. But trying to keep it a little personal, but we'll, again, take, we can add capacity by taking out some of the tables and everything, so. Yep.
Okay. Discuss possible action to approve youth options applications. I'll second. Thank you. Discussion.
Awesome opportunity.
Yeah. James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. It was. Isaiah and Isaiah.
Isaiah, hang.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. Oh, yeah, I had it before. That one, I'm good.
All right, discuss possible action on recommendations from curriculum committee. Do I have a motion?
I think a motion that we.
On A and B?
Yes, A and B.
Yeah? Okay. Discussion.
All I had to do was watch my side.
Andrea, do you want to, you gave us such a great, I mean, give us about three minutes field, would you?
Three minutes field. So my course proposal is on the legislative semester. It is a course that is offered in neighboring districts. Essentially, it is a congressional simulation where students not only get to achieve a political identity and learn about the process, but they participate fully in bringing issues to the table and making them into laws. So that is what this course is all about, it's a mixed course. I'm very excited about it. Just making sure it gets approved, so that I can go start my work on doing it together.
Stop tonight. Let's get stopped through.
What's that?
Yeah. Unrelated.
The eighth grade language arts. Sorry.
My God, are we at kindergarten here?
The eighth grade language arts class is, correct me if I say this wrong, we're going to discontinue the current events.
Trimester.
Trimester program, I mean, take, pull it out of one of the trimester courses, and the language arts will be another one bumped in there, so that the kids are getting a little more weeks, a little bit more reading, writing, a little more intensive anyway.
Kind of a whole different area since it's been more, and it's a very difficult schedule to fit it in.
As a full class.
As a full class.
At this point in time, we're not going to date this up.
There also need some conversations starting now to evaluate opportunities for the following year, so in 2017. Also during the process, some of the other classes that were impacted or could have been impacted was the electrified class, the art, eighth grade art one semester, talked to Krista. She's aware of that, it's status quo, but she'd also like for this year, but also would like an opportunity to do some curriculum work and see, you know, have some ideas on what the program would look like. So, good opportunity to look at things.
Any other discussion on items A and B? Hearing done. James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Have fun. It sounds exciting. It really does.
No, I can't wait. Have a great night.
You too. All right, update on curriculum and option.
Okay, right now I am trying to live any fidelity checks for Dale and I to do at the elementary and Austin and I to do at the high school. What I mean by that is we have these new textbooks in place now, but going into the classroom, we're making sure that they're utilizing maybe the things that they're supposed to be doing within the program. And so I have checklist and they vary in numbers, but you know, like say 10 things that we look for when we go into the classroom, because we're not always going to know everything, but there should be things that we're seeing when we go in. And Dale and I agreed to do, each teacher wants a trimester with them. So every twelve weeks, we would make sure that we were each in each teacher's classroom to observe to see if they're doing those things. And the 3D and Josie as well was going to help us with that. And that's just to make sure that we're using the program, we're using the textbooks that we purchased and so forth, and if there are things that we aren't seeing, why aren't we seeing them and so forth. And hopefully getting one of those in before our next training in January and February. For math, we're bringing in trainers for teachers for computer training with programs, they are charged. That's starting this Thursday, we have somebody coming in, and the next Wednesday we have for reading as well. So they volunteered to come out because we don't have anything from January and February that we needed, so we need that now, so the teachers can meet with them in their grade level groups or individually throughout the day during their prep time and lunch and after-school time to get the help if they didn't answer the questions and so forth. Our middle school reading program right now has some computer glitches, so we're working with them on that, and hopefully they can teach us, you know, if we're doing something wrong and can win it differently or whatnot. Overall, things are going really well. It's a lot of work, obviously, and it's pretty rigorous. That's probably the biggest complaint is that it's pretty rigorous, but you know, we're trying to get our kids really need to be, and so it's going to take us a while to get there, but it takes a little time to do that, but the teachers are excited and putting that time in. And reading language arts and writing, and we're getting fidelity checks again, bringing in the trainers. It's, you know, students, I heard are liking the text and the stories, so they're liking what they're reading a lot more than they were with the previous things that we had. Because the stories are more real-life based, things that, you know, they could experience and so forth, and so they can relate to it better. We do have, like I said, some technology with the collections at the middle school level that we're trying to work with. That's pretty much with the new textbooks, that's where we're at. We'll just continue to monitor it and kind of at the end of the year, see where we are. We also have, every other month, we changed it, what we were going to do every month, but that seemed like a lag once we got started. So every other month, math needs, and every other month, English needs, double K-12 department needs. So they're touching base on that. So tomorrow night, in English morning, or we'll touch base and see what are our needs, what are we doing and so forth. Looking at what we're doing for next year, Spanish, we've met three times to discuss me in standards program, the textbooks, and we met for a full day on October 21st, and we're new textbooks. For right now, we even just talked to him Friday, and we're waiting on more books to come in, looking at if there are things for the seventh grade that we just added here this fall for the first time. So we're closer to it, but we're just waiting for those other books to come in and compare it to what we have, to see what direction we want to go with the purchasing and so forth. Business, we decided to maybe move up into January, second semester, because things have been coming up and now that the new teacher kind of knows the program and everything, we're going to start that. We were going to wait till next year, but we're going to start discussion second semester at least and get going on that. Computer, computers, math for the first time last Thursday, and so we went over everything we were currently doing curriculum-wise, K-12, we really don't have a program to follow necessarily, K-8. High school seems to be okay, so there are a lot of gaps. Where right now, we're using our computer time maybe to play math games or do other things versus having a curriculum in place that teaches specific computer skills and, you know, different internet skills and everything that builds on each other along the way. And so that's what we're looking for, a program that maybe does that because our teachers teach it. And so we need to, you know, have something in place, a scope and sequence, and making sure that we're not double covering things or having any gaps in there, which eventually may change what happens in the middle school, because hopefully they're further along once they get here and we can develop our skills a little bit further. We are looking into a program, which is K-8, which is called Easy Tech, and we're trying to find other programs out there to compare it to, so that we just don't have one that's out there. One of the teachers, or the teachers' main concerns are on this committee. The committee that's formed has one teacher from every grade level in the elementary and then the people that teach it in the 6-12 world. And so one of the biggest things they want to make sure with what's happening is they want to make sure that we have working computers for our students in the elementary. Seems to be an issue at times to make sure that there's enough working for each class that's coming through. And discuss easier ways for students to log in and save time, because the little kids, you know, it takes them forever. They forget everything, and if a teacher has to log them all in, it just takes a lot of instructional time away from them. And so Scott had some, some ideas that maybe, and I don't know how it works exactly, but a teacher could go in and then they all just went to that program or whatnot. So there wasn't any login issues like we're having now. Scott demonstrated on some coding devices, that students could start doing coding on, and we met with this, about this in our tech meeting the other day as well. And so those are just different concepts and ways that education is going that maybe we haven't touched base on so much. And they, it's hard for me to explain it because it's a book by Ted, but Scott, Scott, sit with Scott, he'll tell you all about it.
We wouldn't understand it either, so.
It's kind of like Legos.
Yeah.
It's what fit, what fits, and starts on a fundamental component, and then build it, and then it just kind of, you know, it's, in many respects, no different than learning how to add, subtract, multiply, divide, it's just in a different, I'll call it a different language.
It is, it is a different.
In science, we have met two times, we've had multiple, we have multiple meetings set up with the science specialists, which will start December first, and will continue through the spring, and we are looking at adopting the next generation science standards, and we're rolling with that. So after we meet December first, I will probably have a little bit better timeline with how science is going to operate here for the rest of the year and into next year. And so really, we're looking at purchasing for next year, right now, Spanish and computers, with business and science backed up for the next year. Unless we can make this a some quicker.
Any question?
Yeah, this is a crazy one. Our new math adoption, how much of that, and only because I've learned about it just recently and not when we were sitting there and having people demonstrate and tell us what they were, how much of that follows Singapore math? I mean, it doesn't, or?
It doesn't. The only, the only school that really uses Singapore math that I know, when we were going through the adoption, was Weesberg, it adopted it.
It must be evolving really fast then, because I understand that a lot of schools are picking up on it right now.
And I've heard both ways, I've heard both ways, I know one who had it and didn't like it, so I don't know, it goes both ways.
But it kind of, the kids, younger kids grasp it, and can grasp math faster if they look at that, it's kind of the, like, their brains are wired differently than we know.
All right. Board goals, let's move that to the next meeting. When everyone's here. Any committees?
So, a policy.
There's policy.
Five thirty, December fourteen.
Okay. And then the only other thing to note is that, given that the next meeting is the week of Thanksgiving, Mark and I discussed it and decided to switch it to the thirtieth, so, the last Monday of the month.
Right, and if we needed to have a second board meeting in December, it would be the twenty-first, not the twentieth.
Yep. Okay. Go ahead.
On the dispersments, there's, camcorder is listed twice, for the, it's, one's two hundred and sixty-nine and one's two hundred and twenty-eight.
The reason for that is, we saw the camera for the board meeting, and it had to be returned, so we purchased another camcorder and then got the credit.
We couldn't translate it to the, or move it to the MP four with the program, so we had to send it back to Enzo.
Thanks for answering the question, I do.
All right, you have a motion to adjourn the executive session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C, for the consideration of employment promotion, compensation, or other performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. Do I have a second? Kim? James, Sandy, Cindy, Kim, Isaiah, and I'll vote yes as well.